The council did meet in closed session to discuss two items. One was ongoing labor negotiations, staff was given direction. And then the City of Ripon versus Vandabosh matter, staff was also given direction by legal counsel and the council itself.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the invocation. Pastor?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I believe that you are present here and that you care about the business in front of us today. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your blessing. May we continue to be a community that is blessed with safety. And Lord, will you please honor the work of these ladies and gentlemen as they meet this evening? In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dean Ucker?
Here.
Daniel DeGraff?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zubor?
Here.
Mayor Mike Ristusche?
Present. Discussion, this is time that if anybody has any time that is not on the agenda who would like to speak, seeing just a bunch of sn- please, yeah. Name, address, social security number.
Bank account number.
Date of birth. Mother's maiden name.
Well, if you'd really like for all that, I'm sure that, you know, it's all protected somehow or another, right? My name is Pete Bell, I'm a field representative for Congressman Denham, and I'd just like to say hello to the members of the council and the mayor and the staff here, and give my well wishes on behalf of Congressman Denham to you all, and let you guys know if you guys are having an issue with a federal agency. I know we're working on some issues with Kevin over there, but if you guys have any other issues, please bring them up to me, and I'll be here for the duration of your guys' meeting tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Pete.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody?
I would like to speak.
You're not part of the public.
Oh, it's not ready for me yet?
You're at the end.
What do you want to do?
Well, I wanted to bring up the dog park thing, because it's not the right time.
You're going to add something to your agenda, is that what you're trying to do? Okay, so let's wait till we get to that point, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, and council member is correct, maybe what we'll do is we'll have the approval of the minutes, and then we'll go to approval, the agenda is posted, and then we'll amend it at that point.
Correct.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes, May 8th? Whoops, hold on.
Oh, that's right.
We have a motion?
Sub move.
Second? Okay.
Dean still?
Uh-huh. Need Dean.
Okay, we have approval. Approval of the agenda as posted and/or amended. Dean?
Yeah, I don't, it was just a time, Tom, for me to, just to bring up the fact that the dog park people have the opportunity to get a $25,000 stipend from a dog company area, and it has to be done before the end of the, can't wait till next month.
By June 30th.
Yeah, right.
And it's a grant.
I just thought that we put...
Yeah, so what would be required, then, in order to put that on the agenda tonight, would be a four-fifths vote of the council upon finding that there need to take action arose after we posted our agenda. We didn't know about the need to take action at the time we posted the agenda, so we need to add it to the agenda. And so if someone would make that motion and get a four-fifths vote, then we can add it as an item. We could put it on the consent calendar if you think it's a routine matter, or we can add it as item five...
Well, I was actually thinking that, you know, we're already in support of the dog park.
B.
But, do we need to talk about it?
We can put on the consent, but first of all, okay, so I got the email today or the text today, it's a grant. Is it a federal grant, state, or is there any...
Can we get some background on that?
Yeah, just...
So, let's do this, let's add it to the agenda for purposes of discussion with a four-fifths vote, and then we'll make it item 5B.
So, let's put it on...
Yeah.
I'll make, oh.
How do we do that, since we just made this up out of clear air?
Well, approve the minutes as a, excuse me, agenda's minute. So, hold on, we're going to move it to...
So, we got to do the consent calendar?
What do you think we should put it?
5B.
It would be item added, add it as item 5B, then you'd be on the consent calendar.
So, we're gonna...
5B.
The motion will be to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, correct.
But I want to pull some stuff, too. So, I need to do that now, before we make that motion.
No, what we need to do is, let's make the motion to add it as item 5B, because that requires a four-fifths vote.
Okay.
So, we have a motion by Leo, do I have a second?
No, Dean and I seconded it.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, so you have a 5O.
I vote yes to.
Okay, and your vote, yes.
So, it's 5O.
All right.
5O, okay, so it's added.
And then, Mr. Mayor, the appropriate answer, are there amendments to the agenda now, as in the consent calendar or taking items off of it?
Seeing none?
Yes, there are.
You want to pull?
Yes, I do.
Not add, okay.
No.
I thought you said add.
Okay. You ready?
Must be a long list.
It is. I sent it to her already, so that she can... 1.2E, 1.2F, 1.3I, as a single unit, 1.3L through O, those are those Ds, and then 1.4E and 1.4F.
That's nothing.
I've had shorter lists.
Yeah, yes.
That's pretty short for you.
I've had longer ones, too.
So, do we have an approval, then, of the agenda as amended?
I would do it if the thing came up there, but...
It's up.
Where is it? Oh.
Well, I have, show vote.
We can't approve the... Mine says adopted.
No, that was the other one. That was the previous one.
The system doesn't allow us to...
Okay, let's take a voice for, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries, okay.
Then we approve the consent calendar as amended.
Correct.
Wait, we're moving too fast. Tricia's starting to have, I can tell.
Okay, there you go. We have a second? Now we go to 1.2...
E.
E.
My only question about this, is this, was there an, does the budget contain an amount of money budgeted for this expense?
Yes, yes, it does. It's under actually a marketing expense that we include in our budget.
How much did we budget?
Was it 9,000?
And is this the only money we've spent against the nine grand?
So far, yes.
So, unless we spend any more in the next 18 days, that's all we've spent?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Okay, 1.2F?
1.2F.
We'll approve them all at one time.
Yeah. Where does this money come from? Is this a general fund expense?
Yes.
It is, okay.
1.3I?
None, none. Let's see, I'm getting there.
No, no, that's all right, I'm just doing it for the public. I through O.
Yeah, this is the Ripon lighting district. In looking at the backup material, the budgeted income and the budgeted expenses are almost Can we charge more? I'm trying to remember back when this was set up. Can we charge more than the 42 bucks a year?
We'd have to go out to increase property taxes, get a vote from the public.
So, it'd have to be a vote. So, if this projected expenses is accurate, if the price of power, if nothing else goes up, we're going to start moving into negative territory.
Correct, yeah, we do have a payment that will be going off in 2022, in June of that year, which is $40,000 annually a year. And we also have yet to receive the credit from PG&E for the LED swap-out of their high pressure sodium vapor lights. But, yeah, eventually...
That's just delaying the inevitable.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that my mind remembered that.
Okay, L through O?
L through O. My only question on those is, was there any cost to the city for those?
The only cost, what we paid to our land surveyor to prepare the documents.
Okay, so there was no compensation to the property owners?
Correct.
Okay.
1.4E?
Um...
What is this insurance for? What is it protecting us from?
These are employment claims, so any sort of harassment claims on the workplace.
Ah, okay.
Those type of claims.
All right.
F?
F. I have a comment, and then I had a whole bunch of questions, which James answered, so I'm not going to ask all those, but my only comment was, this was a 93-page report that I got last Thursday, that I was being asked to approve tonight. I understand that it's a draft, and I understand we're late, and I understand Caltrans is sort of putting the arm on us, but I hope when we get the final one, I'll have more than five days to read it, because there's a lot of stuff in there. That's it. And thanks for all the information, James, I appreciate it.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve 1.2E, 1.2F, 1.3I, 1.3L through O, 1.4E, and 1.4F?
Done. Okay, motions all passed, that's the end of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Huh?
We have a member of the public that would like to speak on item 1.4B on the consent calendar.
Oh, 1.4B?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that, I didn't know that. Sorry about that.
It's quite all right, maybe I just missed my turn.
No, no.
Let me introduce myself first. I'm Lisa Mazza, I'm your new Student Support Services Director in Ripon Unified School District, and I'm standing in tonight for Dr. Ziggy Robison. She's actually on vacation, we allowed her to take one week off, and only one week off, so I thought, okay, let me come and address the city council. So, good evening, city council members, mayor and affiliates and community members. We just wanted to thank you on behalf of Ripon School District for your approval of item on the consent agenda, 1.4B, and that's the anticipated SRO contract. It is very clear to me, being a newcomer to Ripon, that the community here really cares about education, high-quality education, and health and safety of their students. And that's just evidenced by this particular agreement coming forward tonight. So, once again, I'm here just to thank you and let you know on behalf of Ripon School District that we greatly appreciate your partnership and this agreement, okay?
We appreciate yours, too, thank you.
My pleasure, bye-bye.
Resolution two, a determinative city council will be attending annual conference in Long Beach on September 12th to 14th.
Doing everybody, speak up.
I'm a no.
You're going?
No, I'm a no.
Oh.
What's the date?
September 19th or something.
September 12th through 14th.
12th through 14th.
I'm out of town.
Well, you would be if you were in Long Beach.
He's not in Long Beach.
Oh, okay.
I'm in another town.
Is it close?
Can you drive over?
Does the council wish to have somebody go?
Do we have to have someone?
No.
This is the question?
No.
Is it important, is there any benefit to the city to having someone at this particular meeting?
I've been doing before, I'd say no.
It depends. The problem is, you have to sign up to go before you know what they're going to be doing, and...
With their voting on it.
Yeah, I've been to some, that the sessions and stuff were very beneficial. I went last year, and I have to be honest, I really wasn't sure it was worth it, and it was in Sacramento.
My experience conferences are, the meetings are not what's beneficial, it's the networking that's beneficial.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
So, does anybody want to go or not?
Well, I'll go, but if we say, in the preface of what Leo's saying is, is if there's nothing that's going to be beneficial to, can we back out? Or...
Well, when do we have to have them to take votes off?
You can, but you paid your money, and they keep it, right?
When do we have to?
When do we have to pay it by? Do we know?
August 31st.
Oh, so we've got plenty of time.
We'll know what's on the agenda by then.
Well, you already, you can probably look up the agenda.
No, I looked.
Oh, no?
I haven't put it up yet.
So, why don't we just approve one to go, and then we'll figure out whether or not you decide it's not worth it, don't go, but we can authorize it at least, does that sound okay? So, anybody want to make a motion to authorize it, and we'll see what...
Sub moved.
Okay, second? Okay, at least we can sign up and get the stuff.
Pete, you want to go or not, do you? Please, I'll go.
Okay, Staff has recommended city council consider approving the attached resolution establishing various liability reserve accounts to be used to fund financial obligations to city during period of short-term economic uncertainty. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next three resolutions are items that we've talked about in the past, all three of these were part of the discussion that we had this year as part of the policy goals and implementation plan in the city council. The first one you have, as we talked about before, there's a number of obligations that we have, even during times when there's some financial stress within the general fund. So, we have established different contingency accounts to continue to make these payments, but most of them are based, they're all based, except for one, on some sort of three-year funding criteria that determines how much needs to be put away in a reserve account. The accounts that we've talked about is one for sick leave contingency, one for a CalPERS reserve, healthcare deductible reserve, workers' compensation and liability, retention reserves, and then a natural disaster litigation reserve. The one comment I would make, since we spoke last about these, I have had conversations with councilmember Zubor about the litigation reserve, the $1 million that was initially proposed. He was asking some of the background of that million dollars, and really, a lot of it was what I was kind of given from Leon when he was in this position, and at that time, a lot of it was based off employment liability, and at that time, we were self-insured. We did not have the, like, deboutio, we didn't purchase a policy out in the market, so we've done that now, that reduces the exposure to the city. So, you know, if council is interested, it's certainly reasonable at this point to lower that number. I think from my standpoint, a half million dollar would probably be something that the council could consider if you choose to do so. If council approves this, and again, this is as-is now with the million dollars, it would require a transfer from the general fund reserve of just over $2 million. If you adjust that number by half million dollars, the reserve, the transfer would become less, by half million dollars.
When you say natural disaster litigation, does our insurance cover natural disasters as well?
Yeah.
And isn't there some sort of deductible or copay or something like that?
Yeah, there's a self-insured retention.
How much is that?
Six, $60,000, I believe.
Per occurrence?
Yeah.
I speak.
Yeah.
Sorry. I talked to Kevin about this because it started with a question about whether or not he could come up with some concrete examples of what kind of exposures that million dollars would protect us from. And as a result of that conversation, all of them are covered by insurance, and so all we would have to have is the deductible for what those things were. And the reason I asked is because as another part of that workshop, we had heard that in order to update the camera system in town, which is old and causing problems, and in order to install the license plate readers that Chief Hormandi has said would make their job more efficient, and as an aside, I would say, if you read the police things that he puts out, a vast percentage of the stops that they make are because the cars are stolen or without a license plate, you know, that's what starts it. To do those two things would cost a half a million dollars. It's a one-time expense, but the net result of that expense is, we have a much more effective police department and a much safer community.
And efficient.
So, my proposal is that we reduce that natural disaster litigation reserve to a half a million dollars, with the stipulation that that half a million dollars be spent on the camera system and the license plate readers, and that it be done. I don't want to be sitting here a year from now, asking the question, well, have we got it or not? The only way it's going to help him, and the only way it's going to make us safer, is to get it done.
Yep.
And we have the money, so that's my proposal. Everything else is fine, I understand why they're there, and it makes sense. I think that half a million would be put to much better use by using it for that. Town is going to be much better off.
Okay, Dean?
My question would be simply this, is why is that million dollars originally put there, and when was it put there? Was there no protection by the insurance clause? Because it seems to me like it's a million dollars set aside for no specific reason. Was it, you know what I mean?
We started buying or purchasing employment liability insurance probably about three or four years ago. So, before that, we were essentially self-assured. So, the thought was always, put a million dollars aside in case there's a claim that comes through, that's how you would fund it. But, like I said, the last three or four years, we've been purchasing...
Okay, and so, from what I'm hearing, now we're pretty safe, so, okay, so why wouldn't we take the whole million dollars out of there? 50,000, whatever that number is, is not a, shouldn't be a financial burden on us, and we could, I don't know what you'd do with the other 500,000, but why would you want to even leave 500,000 in there? I mean, it doesn't sound to me like it's effective money.
I guess there's always the, something that you haven't anticipated, and I think that's really the idea.
So, it's a safety net?
60,000 per occurrence, two or three occurrences.
And then you... Yeah.
Well, I agree with Leo.
I agree with Leo, I'm not disagreeing, and if that's a motion, I would second that, I think that's...
You want to make the motion, Leo?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we redo, adopt a resolution, but change the amount for the natural disaster litigation reserve to $500,000, and designate that the 500,000 we took, that's taken out, be directed towards installation of license plate readers and upgrade, or modernizing, or whatever you want to call it, the camera system in town, so that we've got a functioning system.
Okay, got that?
How long will it take for that to be implemented?
I'll sit down with Dan, and come up with, we'll come up with a schedule, we could let, we could update.
I'm thinking, maybe by August?
I've been running by September.
I was thinking July.
Done and done.
Okay. I know, hold on.
Dan, you're turning red.
Okay, we're all voted now, based on that proposal. Okay, it passes.
Good job.
Okay. Resolution number blank, Staff has recommended city council consider approving attached resolution establishing general fund reserve.
So, again, this is something that we've talked about before, the highlights of this, is this just the reserve that's needed for cash flow throughout the year, and stabilizing the general fund during periods where we're having some economic downturn. Staff is recommending the general fund reserve be set at 35%. That would equate to $3.7 million, based off the fiscal year, 17, 18 annual expenses in the general fund.
And, just to clarify, you went through a full study and analysis before you came to that, this isn't just some numbers put down in percentages?
We did, we did three different things. We did a, we went through a, completed a government finance officer vulnerability, vulnerability survey, we did a benchmark survey of other cities, we did look at specifically Ripon, our sales tax revenue sources, and where our most volatility is within the general fund, and we looked at our cash flow situation, so that's how we came up with the 35%.
Comments, questions, motion?
I guess we're having a silent motion.
Motion, motion approved.
Motion approved.
Dean, Staff has recommended city council consider approving the attached resolution establishing guidelines for use of the general fund mitigation fee.
This is a fee that's been collected by the city for a number of years now from residential development, the intent has always been to mitigate the long-term impacts of growth. The practice that we've had since this fund has, or this fee has been in place, to transfer half of the interest earned each year to the general fund. The other half remains within the mitigation impact fee fund, and it helps grow that fund. What we talked about at the last workshop was a couple different things. One, and was being proposed here, is only the transfer, the transfer would only happen when a general fund surplus does not exist. Besides that, all the money would continue to stay in the fund, but if there is not a surplus in a year, or essentially expenses exceed the revenue, that the transfer would happen at that point. The interest earned could be used for one-time expense that provides an efficiency to how the city conducts day-to-day operations. That would be done by resolution approved by the city council, and there would be a cost-benefit analysis that would be associated with that. And the other one was using the interest earned for an inter-fund loan to advance an AB 1600 project, as it states in the resolution, that the calculated length of that loan would be 10 years, and that would be based off recent growth, calculated based off that. And also, and it goes for this one and the one above that, we would only be using the interest portion of this account. So, right now, if you, we calculated how much of the fund balance is interest, and currently is $285,000 is the interest that's been earned over the years.
That's because we've been getting about 20 basis points.
Well, we've been transferring half of it to the general fund.
Yeah, but still, oh gosh, at 2% alone, you're $120,000 a year. Rates have been down. Okay, any questions?
Just to make sure I understand, so at this point, there would be $285,000 available, and assuming that at the end of this year, income exceeded expenses, that money would be left alone, and it would be available for either one of the scenarios that are in the resolution. And if we didn't spend it, next year, whatever we earned, assuming income exceeded expenditures, that number would be higher, until such point that we dip into it and do something with it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't you guys at that end do something?
So, I second it, there we go.
Okay, who moved?
Dean.
Okay.
Mr. Quaid, draw.
Oh, I got to vote now.
You got to vote now?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't make the motion, you got to vote.
If he's not a mover, he falls asleep.
I do, I lose interest.
Okay, it passes, thanks Kevin, that was very good. Public hearing. Council take action on the following items. This is a public hearing to approve a resolution ordering the formation of assessment district to be known as the Vineyards Assessment District Number 17-1, setting the amount and giving approval to levy and collect assessments for main tenements and certain landscaping, irrigation systems. So, we'll have a staff report, we'll open the public hearing, and then we'll have council comment. So, who is, James?
Yeah, that'll be me, Mr. Mayor. So, this is the, yeah, the public hearing for the, to approve the resolution ordering the formation of the assessment district for the Vineyards subdivision. The report that you see in the, in the agenda packet was missing, exhibits A and B to this report, which actually shows the assessment areas. Exhibit A was the final map for the subdivision, and I believe Dan's going to put that, put that up. Exhibit B was the actual areas of landscaping to be done. The actual APN numbers for each individual parcel was included in the report. And with that, I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Mayor. This is exhibit B, which shows the actual areas of landscaping.
This is all what would be maintained with the money that's generated by this district?
Correct.
And the map that was up there before, there's what, 130-something houses in there?
133.
133.
So they would each be assessed an amount of money to cover that?
Four seventy a year.
Do have, if any members of the public doesn't want a, a copy of this, we do have physical copies available as well, which show those exhibits. They were included in the previous resolution.
Is that it? So the assessment's four hundred and seventy dollars a year, correct? And it's collected with the sales tax? So we just tell Fonzie, yes, I mean, you tell Fonzie and he'd add it to the roll? Is that what they do?
Yeah.
Huh? Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing if anybody has any comments or questions or concerns or input. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for comments, questions, concerns or approval. Anybody on the right side of the table want to do it?
We can't because she hasn't put the thing up there yet.
I know, it's closed even to me. We can't vote. I can't bring up the vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan, we got a second by Jake, discussion.
Nothing's coming up for move second.
All in favor? We already did it.
Yeah, but the technologist has got to straighten us out.
Okay, we have a motion by Daniel, we have a second by Jake, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Alexander Place Assessment. This is the public hearing to approve a resolution order in the formation of assessment district to be known as Alexander Place Assessment District number seventeen dash two. Setting the amount and giving approval to levy and collect assessments for maintenance of certain landscaping irrigation systems.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is the, the same thing, just for the Alexander Place subdivision, which is located on Doak Boulevard and Vera on the corner there. It's a public hearing, open to any comments. And we, we had the same issue. This, these exhibits A and B were not included in this, this final report. The APN numbers for each parcel was included. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, two hundred and thirty-one dollars per lot. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wanting comments, concerns, input, questions? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for comments, concerns, input or approval. We have a motion.
Wait, it's there. Come on, you guys.
Okay.
God, Dan, you're quick, I swear. Is that what it is?
Okay, motion carries. C, proposed fiscal year in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen city budget. So we'll have staff begin, we'll open the public hearing and then we'll go to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to point out a couple of things in, in the staff report. I think we've talked about a lot of these things probably on a couple of different occasions. But I wanted to talk about some of the legislative issues facing the city. One of, and they're both related to, to street and roads. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about revenue in the street and roads and trying to maximize that revenue as much as possible. With the passing of Senate Bill one, the city was receiving or going to be receiving two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the first year of SB one. There is now a statewide measure that, that could be repealing that, that, that will go to the voters in November. So that, that will reduce the amount of money that we thought we were going to get. The other thing is LTF money. So because of the size of Ripon and that we do not have unmet transit needs, we're able to use our allocation of LTF for street and road purposes. That is money that is intended for transit, but again, because we don't have unmet transit needs, we're able by state law to use it for unmet transit needs. One of the things that's currently being discussed by the council of governments is talking about some policy changes. That would no longer allow Ripon to use its funding for street and road. They would like to see it diverted to transit uses. For us, that would reduce our street and road revenue by five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So it's a real significant impact to our ability to go out and do the capesills that we do, the overlays that we do.
Who's recommending that?
COG.
COG. COG staff. So, and with that, and if we're not able to go out and do these overlays and capesill projects, what's really going to start happening is gonna start further degrading the roads. You know, the roads right now that are in decent shape are preventing from going to that poor, very poor category. It's just an element of our ability to go out and do those projects and, like I said, degrade those roads.
So who gets that money instead of us?
It would go to the, some sort of transit use.
So RTD and rail?
Well, sort of. The problem is that all of these improvements that are being. Funded by SB one, which is the extension of ACE down to Series and the extension of the San Joaquins up to Sacramento. The cost of setting it up is being covered by the state. The problem is there is no operational money in this. And so in order to take five hundred million dollars worth of trains and make a move, money's got to be generated someplace. And so what COG staff is going to recommend, they've let us know it's coming, is that. LTF money would, it's supposed to go to transit anyway. Now they're going to take it all. In all honesty, I don't think it's going to happen overnight because it's going to be three or four years before all this stuff is in place and ready to run. But what it means is if this passes is we're going to have to start figuring out what we're going to do to replace. Or get along without roughly a half a million dollars that right now we use every year for streets and roads. I'm guessing within four or five years, it'll be gone.
And to me, that's a difficult position for you guys to be in because do we fund trains going up and down? Do we fund our own cities? I mean, that's a decision that COG's got to make.
No, I realize that.
I'm just saying it's tough. I mean, it's tough.
It all sounded really well and good that we were getting basically a billion dollars to improve these trains in the valley. And then all of a sudden, everybody woke up and said, well, that buys all the stuff. Who's going to pay for the engineers and the diesel to make it work?
Tough.
So that's going to be over the next year, a lot of the conversations that I think probably between all of us, we're going to be very involved in and we'll continue to update the council.
But if the state's paying for the facility like you're talking about, this isn't going to be up and running and need operation money for a while, but still.
No, and the other pressure is going to be this new discussion about some sort of a rail connection between Tracy and BART. I sit on that board too. And. They got all these grand ideas. It's going to cost probably about one and a half billion dollars. Same problem. They can get grants to build the stuff. Then they got to figure out how they're going to make it run.
Capital money's pretty easy. Operation money never is.
And it is, is a very difficult position because you have a street and road funding problem, you have a transit funding problem. So how do you, how do you balance all that? Selfishly, you know, well, not selfishly, but I want to make sure council is aware that this is being discussed.
Well, for us, that's true. But when you advance that argument to Tracy, Mantica, Stockton, Lodi. They look at you like, what is your problem? We don't have any LTF money anyway. Because all theirs is already going to transit. So that's, that's the discussion that happens.
The other side of it too is if people actually do use mass transit, it does lower the level of traffic on your inner streets supposedly, I would guess. Oh, it does, you know. So, I mean, but for Ripon, we don't have mass transit, so. It's really going to affect us in a negative, at this point in time.
And this is a revenue source that's derived from sales tax. So, you know, the fuel being sold in Ripon. So, you know, you want to get as much benefit as you can that stays in our local community. Obviously, our, our residents are also, you know, riding the ACE train in RTD. But you also have a street and road problem that you're trying to fund, so. The other parts of this, we, we've talked about, I will make an adjustment to the budget based on our earlier discussion about the liability reserve funds. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm gonna open up to the public first, if that's okay, Kevin, in case the public has any, and then we'll come back to the council. Open up, public hearing, proposed twenty eighteen nineteen city budget. If anybody has any comments, observations, input. Pete? So I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn it over to council. You want to speak or you want to vote?
No, I want to speak.
Okay.
My, my question is, the numbers that you show in the agenda are expenditure numbers. What about income? Are you projecting that income will be the same next year as this year? Less or more or what?
Yeah, one of the things I did to this year's budget is I changed the first sheet on the budget and it more closely reflects what you see every month from Lisa. I don't know if you remember, there used to be a page that kind of was half green, half red. That, that was changed. So on that first sheet, I show what are the projected starting balances at the beginning of the fiscal year, what is the annual revenue for each of the funds. Projected expenses for each of the funds, transfers, capital projects, and then projected ending balance.
Is that in the packet?
Yes, three C eight.
Oh, that.
I don't know what page it is.
It's way back.
Four, packet page four sixty-eight. But they also show the summary above that someplace. I just saw it.
Yeah, there's a summary in my staff report that.
Okay.
But I'd be interested if the council likes that format better than what you've seen in the past, please, please let me know. I'm trying to find something that.
I absolutely do. It looks really like a real balance sheet, income statement and everything else.
That's what we tried to do. But I'm trying to find something a little more user-friendly for the council and kind of shows where the different money's going, so, and, and for the public. So any comments you have about that, any suggested changes, I would love to hear.
My only comment is the proposed transfers, transfers from where, what, I'm a little bit lost there.
Which one are you on, oh?
Am I looking at the wrong page?
Page three sixty?
No, he's back on the first page.
Yeah.
That, what you had just up there, right there.
Yeah.
Well, and see, that's part of the problem is that doesn't show the beginning balance. Because it starts with six million, he's going to bring in eleven, spend eleven, then he's going to transfer two point something million, which we just agreed to. To other places, but it's still part of the ending balance.
But four sixty-eight shows you the income.
If you look at that page, you can, it's easier to see.
Details on page four sixty-eight.
That, that first page or one of the first page of the budget, I think it gets you kind of what you're.
That's just the summary. Then you've got the detail below that. Four sixty-eight, Dean.
I know, but it won't move. It won't move.
Right here. See, it shows what he starts with and here's those transfers. And then he ends up with that, which is this amount less than that.
And look at the top, Dean, July one twenty eighteen is the starting balance and then you go to June thirty of twenty nineteen. So that's next year's budget.
I don't know why my screen froze. I think he does it on purpose.
Yeah, he does.
Make me look bad.
Just to make sure we remember who's in charge here.
And then you got all the detail behind that too.
Yeah.
Which is good. I like this much better.
Thank you.
Much better.
Freeze it myself? Thank you.
Four sixty-eight, Dean.
Are we adopting this tonight?
Just a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I opened the public hearing, I closed it and there's comments for the council. Any, anything else the council wants to discuss? Okay, so that was just for, so you don't need a vote, do you, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
You don't need a vote? That's just definitely, okay. Okay, so nothing else on that? Thank you. Now we go to four A, second reading and adoption ordinance approves the development agreement entered in due between the city of Ripon Meadow Wood, Ripon LLC, Mangels Brothers, et cetera. This is the second reading and adoption.
Actually, you guys, I believe we did the first reading and introduction back in March. They finally have gotten all together and have agreed to sign this thing. And so now it sits in front of you in June and really no changes to the development at all. Development agreement that you guys voted on in March.
Right, so this is just the second reading and adoption. Okay, so we can't vote.
Voice vote?
We can't?
But I, I don't have it up to vote. Okay, now we do. Oh, did you vote already?
I did.
Oh.
Okay. Second reading adoption.
You guys are missing all the fun back there because playing with these computers is, it's the only reason we show up every month.
Sad part is we got to learn each time we come. Okay, four B, the ordinance temporarily suspends certain provisions of chapter nine point three two skateboard facilities. Second reading and adoption. Ken, do you want to say anything on that again? Who?
Yeah, this is the second reading and adoption of the changes we made to allow scooters in the, the skate park. And I believe we also made the change from May to Shall and that should be on the final one. It wasn't on the last reading, but it should be on the final ordinance change for that.
So the May will be changed to Shall?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan.
All right.
Are they out there yet?
Can't be because this isn't done yet.
So signs have been ordered and once this gets approved, it'll, they'll be allowed out there.
The word's out there, I know that. So nobody's been out there?
I don't want to say nobody, but we're waiting for this to take effect.
I wouldn't either. Hold on, we got to.
You should see the scooter that Dean bought.
This Dean?
This Dean. It's impressive. He's, he's going out there.
Oh goodness gracious. You better, better call paramedics right away. You're gonna, can you get that up? Should we take a?
There it is.
Okay, there we go. Move second.
Way to go, Jake.
Okay, second reading adoption passes. Discussion items, commute traffic on Doak Boulevard, Second Street. Mayor Restush has requested city council discuss the evening traffic and alternatives to solve the issue of commuter traffic using Ripon streets as shortcuts.
So staff has looked into this issue. It's, it's been an interesting process going through this. We spent a lot of time with Tom's office. Talking about some of the legality of the options that we've looked at and we also reached out to the city of Fremont, who's had a lot of experience trying to deal with a similar problem. As you know, during commute hours, evening commute hours, our downtown sees a significant increase in, in traffic. We believe a lot of that traffic is trying to get off, is getting off on the one twenty interchange to avoid one twenty ninety-nine. They come down West Ripon Road and from that point, it kind of, have a number of options of how to get back on ninety-nine, but essentially try to get back on ninety-nine at the main street overpass. So what Mayor Restush has asked staff to look at the different, different options in, in ways of mitigating that. Before I get to that, I just wanted to show you, we have been collecting data from the, the vehicles being traveled. So this is one week of data. And you can see that we're seeing about four hundred and, close to four hundred and fifty, maybe a little less, most days. Vehicles coming in per thirty minutes. So it's every thirty minutes, we're getting close to four hundred and fifty, five hundred vehicles coming into our community.
That's going through just that intersection on, at Main and Ruth.
Yes.
I know.
The other day I couldn't get out of my own office to get home. I literally had to go out the backside.
You go out robber king.
Yeah, right. Through the drive, all, drive all the way through and go out the backway and go down fourth. And, you know, just my personal.
Then you get down to the main, to the overpass and you're sitting there.
Well, and the problem is there's no easy answer we just talked about. There's no, and you know what? No matter what we do, residents are going to have to suffer with it. But go ahead.
None of them are residents. They're all go, it's all through traffic.
Wait, wait, thirty-two thousand in town, twenty-seven thousand out of town.
No, coming.
That's just a direction they're going, right?
Yeah, that's a direction.
Into.
Yeah. So we looked at four, four different options. One, it, it, it's the regional improvements to Highway ninety-nine and one twenty. Obviously, there's not enough capacity for all these vehicles. We have talked to the council of governments. There is a project to improve the one twenty ninety-nine interchange. Unlikely that's going to be completed before twenty twenty-four. So we're going to be living with this for, for some time now.
But, but let's be clear, even if that thing was expanded to be fifteen times, it's still going to bottleneck on ninety-nine.
Right, you're still going to have a problem.
It's a problem farther south.
Exactly, yeah. But, you know, even ideally with, with ninety-nine, you would like to see them find ways to increase capacity. It's very unlikely, though, you look at the ninety-nine, their, their overall master, their planning documents for that, they don't have the right of way necessary, some of the environmental concerns, money, very difficult to add capacity. So regional improvements, as much as you would like to say that really is an option, probably not a realistic option in, in any short-term timeframe. The other option that, that was looked at was creating private roads coming into Ripon. There is a city back in Pennsylvania that had limited access, so essentially what they would do is give members of their public a, a sticker for their car. And they, they were the only ones able to access those roads during those hours, as I understand it. So we.
New Jersey, too.
Oh, New Jersey, I'm sorry, that's the one I was, I was referring to. Going, going through the legality of doing this, and Tom, please, just correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a street that's been funded by public money, it's maintained by, by taxes. The legality of it, you don't have the option to make it a private road. Actually, when I talked to the city of Fremont, their legal counsel agrees with what Tom's office came up, and he mentioned that he's had a lot of conversations with the town in, in New Jersey. And they're actually getting sued now for, for making that a private road. So it'd be interesting where that case comes out.
They're being sued by a guy from New York.
Oh, is that what it is?
Because he's the one of them that can't drive on it, so he's suing them.
Yeah.
My, I guess my question would be, i- if you went to that posted sign or whatever, and you fined him a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars. Can we collect that money and use that money for street improvements? Would that be our money, or would that have to be distributed to the state, county, or, you know, like most of our, everybody thinks that we pull people over and we just put all that money in our, you know, bank, which is not true. In this scenario, could you?
We, we wouldn't, we didn't even get to that level of discussion because we, we can't do it, and so we just thought, you know, even if we did. You're, you're probably right, the disposition of the revenue would be not, something you would not be very happy about, I'm sure, at the end of it, even if you could do it. So we, we, we sort of thought that this was sort of dead on arrival.
Oh, okay.
So that I understand why we can't. If somebody gave the city ten million dollars so that we could construct a road, an existing road, a new road. That would be through, for through traffic. Since we don't use state money to build it, and it's not on state property when we build it, it's our road. In that scenario, could we exercise control?
You're a public agency, though, so it was, it's still a public road, right? So the, the, the vehicle code appears to preempt this, and, and say only certain traffic control devices can work, this is not one of those that's on that list.
Or it became a private road.
A private road, like, for example, like a, you get, you get, it would be somebody gave the city ten million dollars, you're still talking about, you're changing Leo's hypothetical a little bit. You'd be having now, Mike Restuccia has a big piece of land, and he just wants to have a private road for Michael and his friends.
Well, they're done with bonds.
Well, they're done with bonds and public.
They're done privately. There's a lot of private roads.
But if, if my scenario, then the guy who had the money said, I'll build the road, I'll buy the property, I'll build the road, it's my road.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then we could, then it could be done.
Well, I, 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 I still think you have an issue with it not being part of the, covered under the vehicle code. And, and how, and exactly, and how would we, how, would, would we have to permit that road? Yeah, we probably would, and then you'd have the issue of enforcement at, at that point as well, so.
Well, how does it work?
What I can tell you is, there are infrastructure funds throughout this country that do exactly what Leo's talking about, private-public partnership, that can't in fact do that and charge.
Yeah.
Was Megan, if I remember right, Megan was saying some of those are through a J P A, and then the, that J P A will put in an agreement with Caltrans because of enforcement and some of the other, cause you know, it's a danger to the public, so I, I think they have agreements with Caltrans, but I think a lot of them are done through J P A's.
Yeah, you, you first have to form the J P A, and then, that's right.
Well, how does it work for a gated community? How did, how then does, do his officers get to go in and enforce traffic? In that, they don't?
If, if it's a private roadway, take for instance, Warren Road, which is off the frontage.
Yeah.
It's a private roadway, we don't enforce any traffic violations. Same with Caps Way. It's a private, it's considered an alleyway, but it's roadway, we don't enforce any violations on that road.
But if it's in a subdivision, because they built it for the city, it's not?
We don't enforce anything in there.
So like Jerry Barton's little thing over there by Spring Creek, you guys don't go in there?
Go do downed around there?
Hey!
We, we can, we can access the property, but we can't enforce traffic violations within there. The only thing that can be enforced, the only thing that can be enforced in there is the red curb, cause it's a fire, fire hazard. It's a fire lane.
Okay. Huh. So it would be a lawless area, basically, even if we could build it.
What was that?
Sounds better all the time.
So what we can, what can we do?
Well, we, we're gonna move on through the, through the things we can do. Yeah, so we'll keep moving on that.
The, the other one that we looked into was charging a toll, I think it was to Councilmember Eucher's point, if there's a way to collect some additional money. Because of the additional use of our roads, that was another option from the legality of it, that was not possible. These are fund, roads are paid again with public money, maintained with public money, even though they get increased traffic, there was not a way to collect a toll.
I was fast tracking, that's a public road.
So a lot of these, the, the tolls are put in place for the improvement, so the ground bonds, it's a funding mechanism for the bonds to go out and construct the improvements.
But, but, but the issue of having an existing road, converting an existing road into a toll road, that, we've, we've not been able to come across anything like that, or anything that would be feasible.
It would have to be a new road.
Right, and, and that doesn't solve your problem, you know, we're not trying to create more capacity, we're, we're trying to solve the problem with the public road, so.
Permanent DUI checkpoint, Monday through Friday, three to six?
Well, there are some things we can do.
What's the definition of a new road? Like, so if you went out, you have to completely demolish the old road, and then rebuild it from the ground up?
Well, but you got, right, you'd have.
You'd have to abandon the right of way and everything.
You'd have all the right of way issues as well, it, it, it's just such an enormous fix that you're not gonna be able to, yeah.
The one thing, and this was actually Tom, we've talked about this so much, this was Tom's idea, just saying, is there a way to meter people coming in to Ripon? So the last option that we talked about was utilizing traffic control devices to meter people coming in, cause our roads were not designed for this much, the volume of traffic that we're getting. So if, if there was a way to meter the people, reduce it, and slowly get them back on the freeway, actually, Dan, if you could go to the next slide. One of the things that.
Put Ruth on red for three hours.
One of the things we did is we put the, the stoplight on flashing. And so you could see here, this is in a different week, it's gone down a little bit, instead of four fifty to five hundred, you're more four hundred to four fifty, for the most part. And maybe because of school, or just because of the way this works out, there's other variables, and the school got out, so we don't know exactly, it was the stoplight.
The flash wasn't slow enough.
Right. But when, when I talked to Fremont, and we kind of compare notes of their, their legal research, our legal research, our idea of metering, he said that's exactly what they do. They've done a lot of research, and he believes that people are getting off the freeway in Fremont for eight to fifteen minutes of savings, and, and these are people commuting here to the valley. So what they have done is they've put these different devices in place to, it's really the opposite of what we all learned in engineering school. You know, you try to increase capacity, improve level of service, they did the opposite. They reduced the, the capacity, they reduced the level of service, so the time now is less, so if you're gonna take these alternative roads, it's gonna take you longer than if you would've stayed on the main line.
Leave the Jackton stops light thirty minutes at a time.
Right.
One way, and then, five seconds the other way.
Saving time, it's about continuing to move.
To move.
And that's the big thing.
Yeah, and, and so, wait, after they put in these different devices, they saw a thirty-three percent reduction in the number of vehicles that come off the road. The one thing he did mention is, there, there, it's like water, they try to find the least resistant way to get around, so they put all this stuff in, and all of a sudden they noticed, they, they found another road. You know, maybe it's a little bit longer, maybe it wasn't eight minutes of saving, maybe it was only four, but I think to your point, they found other ways to keep moving, so you kind of just moved the problem around. But for us, and, and for them too, maybe you're strategic about where you would like to have your problem. You know, for, for us, Dan, can you go to the next slide?
Well, we'd rather have on Doak than we have, but let me ask you a question, so in your discussions, was there any discussion about, cause obviously we need to be, we, we are sensitive, not, we need, we are sensitive about our own residents. I mean, if we block everybody else, we're blocking residents too, did they say anything about residents complaining about these new things that were put in place, that, hey, we don't like it, cause you're impacting us?
Yeah, so they've done a number of outreach to the residents, they went out and met with everyone, showed them the plans, they're impacted by the traffic no matter what. And, and these devices, you know, a lot of times it's preventing them from going on their streets, so they do have impact, but they also do have the benefit of less volume of traffic on, on their roads.
The good part is, whatever we do is, can be shut off tomorrow.
Right. An example in Ripon, this is kind of our first cut of, of, you know, every city's different on how you would do this. But on, just to orientate you on this, this figure here, on the upper rectangle there on the left, that is coming into Ripon on West Main Street. And then you're heading east towards Main, and then Ruth's Road continues, you can see where it continues on the bottom rectangle. We just didn't have enough room to do everything, so it just kind, it just continues on the bottom until you get to Jackton Road. So just to kind of orientate you, but as you, what we talked about was, as you come in on West Main Street, you would put up a, a, a physical barrier to prevent cars from getting into that second lane, so you really reduce it to, to one lane coming in. Both for South Highland and Ruth's Road, those would be right out only. So local traffic would only have the ability to make a right out, use that, that southern leg of West Main to get access to Jackton Road. If they wanted to head west and, and make a, a left essentially on West Main, they would have to work their way either to Moller, or, or work their way to Jackton.
Yeah.
And head in that direction. But essentially by getting one lane coming into the city right there, that's gonna be one function of limiting the number of cars that come in.
Are you talking about, I know temporary, but permanent, or are you talking about certain times of the day?
It would be permanent, so this here, you know, you would, we, we would probably start with some sort of pylons, the, the, yeah, and see how those work, and eventually, the problem with those, they don't last. People end up running those over, they, they're a maintenance nightmare.
Could you open up this section here, so the people that did turn right had a chance to just get over and make a left-hand turn there?
Yes.
Soon as you do that, those people going east are gonna sneak in there.
Oh, yeah, that's.
These people, they're weird. I mean, if there's an opening, they're in it, I don't, they don't care whether they're going the right way or the wrong way.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just mean at the, the very end of it here, so these, the people coming out of the subdivision, they could eventually get left on Jack, so they wouldn't have to make a right-hand turn, go down Jackton, turn around, or, or go straight, and try and turn through.
Yeah.
Dollar General or whatever, Walgreens there.
Well, no, they would, you know what you would do, is you would just go down here and come up to Jack.
That's kind of what we were thinking.
That's what you would do, that'd be the most efficient way.
People just change their habits.
Then you wouldn't have to fight even trying to get on.
And they're probably doing it now, in a way, with the volume of traffic during those times, they're probably learning to do that in a way.
Yeah, they're not trying to make a right-hand turn there.
Right. And then with that single lane coming in, from the out-of-town folks coming in, it'd be one lane, and then we would also adjust the light to meter traffic more. Instead of even blinking it, we probably would just adjust the timing of it, keeping a red longer, shorter greens. So our folks within the intersection, the local people will be able to get through there in better times, people coming in would be metered, it's probably something we're gonna have to play with. And try to get the timing right to avoid backups on Second Street, Stockton Avenue, where we're, where we're getting them now. The one thing I would say about all this, though, you do all this, you make it bad enough, it's very likely traffic is gonna start taking Moller, it's gonna start taking Austin to.
To get to Doak.
To Moncur to Doak. But a- again, you've gotten them out of your downtown, you've gotten them off Stockton Avenue, and now the problem's on, on Doak Boulevard.
Well, we can't stop it, right?
You're not gonna be able to stop it.
Legally, we can't stop, so the only we can do is probably redirect it. If we would rather redirect it to Doak, we keep it on Main Street, where you can't even get off, out of, out of the buildings, and then.
Well, the other street we really need to look at is Second Street, too. Second Street's worse than Main Street.
Back up to Palm.
Yeah, it is, it's backed up further around about half the time.
Right, and, and, you know, even you get them on Doak, they eventually could come, start, keep coming up, I mean, the, the way that the algorithms work is all real-time, and, and even when they are diverting people to different cities. They split the cars up, they don't only go to one road, the algorithms that Waze and Google uses, is putting, is, is putting people in, in a number of different roads.
Leaving my car, if I'm driving, it'll redirect me if there's too much traffic, but when that starts getting backed up, it'll send you someplace else, so it's constantly changing depending on the, the real-time traffic.
And they're impossible to work with, so Google and Waze, they're both owned by Google. Waze will talk to you a little bit, so if you tell them we have turn restrictions, we have, they'll incorporate that into their algorithms. Google will not talk to you, even though they're the same company. And, and Fremont said, the only way we were able to actually communicate with Google was through the press. They started putting electronic signs up saying, ignore your app, stay on the freeway. And, and then finally, Google, I think incorporated some of their traffic restrictions into their algorithms, so.
Up on the, the Stockton, is that, is that called the Stockton Overpass?
Yeah.
Shouldn't.
Second Street Overpass?
Yeah, to get on back on the freeway, couldn't we turn that stop sign into a yield sign? So the traffic flows and doesn't, it's back.
Caltrans.
Oh, that's right, we can't touch that, huh?
At the top of the overpass.
I will tell you that, the bad thing is, is, I don't mean to be rude, and I don't know, that, people don't even read signs.
No, they don't.
Because like, when I go to work in the morning, I go right by, you know, the waterfall there, and that's a yield sign. And they're backed up all the way to Spring Creek, and I have to come in, cause I live on California, on that little side street there, and they're just backed up there, and that's a yield sign there, but nobody even initiates the yield, they stop there, they stay there.
It's a weird deal, though, with the two lanes coming through, cause people wanna just, you got two lanes coming off the freeway there, and people wanna, some go, and then the person doesn't know if they can yield or goes.
Well, then you got the guy turning the left off of the, on the other side, and you don't know, is he gonna swing all the way around and hit the other lane, or is he gonna go to the?
Yeah.
I close my eyes and go.
It's actually been a lot better since the Starbucks is open.
Well, I mean, but typically it's common sense.
And one of the other things that Caltrans is doing right now, they're installing ramp metering, so.
Who?
Uh, Caltrans is, so, that, that's gonna change some things, too, so James and I are, are working on setting a meeting up with them to talk about, talk about this problem, and, and what it means with ramp metering, and how, if they have any solutions to this. I have reached out to Caltrans, the solutions I've gotten were, were not really.
Because they come top of, of this, the overpass there, now what everybody's doing, because it's backed up, the right side of the freeway is backed up all the way down to the stop sign, back down Second Street and Stockton Street, and, and so they, what they do now is they all pull over left, go a hundred miles an hour up to the front, and then they.
And try to pull in.
Pull, and try to pull in, and then, and then people, I'm surprised that.
But if we can direct them off of Second Street, and they gotta come down Doak, they can't do that.
Yeah, right.
So at this point, you know, if there's any option that the council wanted to consider, it would be something like this, again, this is a real quick kind of idea that we had. But at this point, staff is just looking for some direction from the council of how you'd like this to go forward.
Well, it's only gotten worse, I get complaints all the time, I think we need to do something and give it a try, I don't know what it should be.
I don't have a problem with.
Gotta be legal and moral.
And I really think you need, we need to look at somehow, I don't know if it's that you don't allow left turns off of Highland or some, somehow, we've gotta open up Second Street. It's worse than downtown.
It's terrible.
Downtown is okay, except when the kids get out of school. Second Street and Doak are where the, where the problem is.
Well, what I'm finding too now is that in front of the fire department, people are not only going down Second, but they're cutting through town, and all of a sudden it's backed up in front of the fire department.
Right, it is, it's crazy.
Right. Mantique's got the same problem, I was talking, I was talking to council. The only way they're gonna solve this thing is make, do an expressway like on Union Avenue or some, and have the expressway go that way, and cut over to ninety-nine down there, and that's the only way to solve it.
Or get another crossing of the, the, the river crossing.
Or another, well, you can have another river crossing, exactly.
Right, that, that would be the, that's the, that's really the regional solution.
Congress really ought to be looking at that, that's a, that's the only way you're gonna solve this problem, cause this isn't going away unless the population moves.
They're talking about that.
They're moving, but.
It's out here.
So if council's interested in something like that, we could put a little bit more work into this, and bring.
I am.
We need to do something.
Bring back a, a plan of, of what that could really look like, and.
Do we need to have like any public hearings and things like that, or can we do it, and?
I know when I talked to Fremont, they did a lot of public outreach with this, so we could put out, you know, a press release and put a next little word out, talking about.
Vince is here.
What we're looking at, so. What we're looking at, so.
Yeah, because I'm just figuring, there are going to be some people in town that are going to, no matter what we do, get caught in this.
Well, and I was concerned about that, but like Kevin said, I'm not sure they're not really impacted now. It may be the same impact.
Well, well, but if you put the information out ahead of time.
They know.
They have a chance to come in and say, what about, what about? And if we haven't thought about it, we can do it.
Incorporate.
Tom and I were just talking, we could take a look at maybe an environmental process with this. Go through a process and, and have certain findings, um, as, as we do.
How long will some of this take? And we don't want to put this in place two years from now.
No, and I don't think it needs to take that long. We're just talking about coming back with some sort of resolution and really making findings that we're, we're mitigating a congestion and safety concern. That, that the cure that we're imposing is better than what we're doing in terms of public.
Something like this, we could, we could bring back to the next council meeting and put it in place? I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know if we're going to do, it depends if we do it, call these an actual project under sequel.
We give James a yellow vest and a flashlight, he could be out there tomorrow.
Well, we're, we're, from, from staff, we're just as motivated to get this done as quickly as we can. It may be next meeting, it may be August. We'll do it as fast as we can.
Well, at least we're addressing it.
Yeah.
And we weren't before. We all talked about it, we all knew it needed to be done, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like everybody's interested in taking a look at it, so. Okay. Appreciate you doing that homework, thanks. And it's not easy to do and it's not easy to solve. You guys okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Sounds like everybody's okay with it. So now we'll go on to.
Five B. Remember we added five B.
That's right. I wonder what the hell I wrote that for. Okay, Dean?
Mr. Uker's thing.
Dean, five B. Or do you want, do you want, do you want maybe, do you guys know much about this dog park thing? To give us detail?
I, uh, I got an email last night or this morning.
I got an email or text or something.
So.
I didn't, I'm hurt.
I told him to talk to Kevin. I told him to talk to Kevin. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, correct?
I might even, I didn't get that information.
The amount's twenty-five thousand.
What, what essentially the letter is saying is that, uh, the city council is supporting the Friends of the Dog Parks participa, participation in the grant program. And, um, essentially, um, you're supporting their efforts to build them and, and for them to maintain the dog park. And, uh, if our community is awarded a grant, um, the city council will help our citizens organize, organize such efforts once the park is complete.
We're not committing ourselves to any kind of matching funds or anything?
No, no matching funds, and I adjusted the letter, uh, regarding maintenance. We have an MOU with Friends of the Dog Park, uh, they've agreed to take over the maintenance. So this is essentially helping them organize those activities.
Sounds like all we need to do is show that we've dedicated the land.
Yes.
Is what it looks like.
Who's giving, who's making the money available?
It's the Pet Safe Bark For Your Park Committee.
They're a, uh, they, they're a, uh.
Sounds kind of fly by nice to me.
They're, they're basically a business that supports dogs and, uh, they're, you know, it's, it's a business that sells, I think they sell dog food.
Well, it says consistent approximately so many acres for use as a pet safe dog park. So I don't know if that means it's their dog park as an operating entity? Could be, which we don't really care, I guess. Our, our agreement would be.
That would be, but it doesn't.
Yeah, so we have an MOU right now that's allocating one point two acres towards the dog park. Uh, so I think this is consistent with that. Like I said, I did adjust the language regarding maintenance. That would not be a city responsibility, it would be Friends' responsibility. We would just help organize those efforts.
What happens when they stop maintaining it?
What we say in the MOU is.
Bulldoze it.
Becomes the corporation.
Became the chipping, chipping range.
Yeah. It's a temporary, we voted on this.
Long time ago.
I still remember exactly what we said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they have to, they have guidelines, we have guidelines set up. And if they don't maintenance it and they don't do what they say they're, they're due diligence, then we have the authority to shut it down and move on and then let Ted take over.
Give it to Ted, give it to Ted for Public Works.
Wasn't just part of the corporate yard that we set aside, yeah.
Yeah, but we did, okay. So we need a, we need a vote to accept.
I want to see how Tricia's going to put this one on here.
I've gotten a little space holder for it there.
Where? I don't see it.
You guys don't see it?
Nope.
Oh, how weird, okay.
Dog park letter.
Five B, motion.
Five B, look at that, down there.
Dog park letter.
Oh, well, yeah, but I'm talking about my little move.
On your left-hand side.
Oh, don't get.
It's down there, see that? Dog park letter.
Where's your dog park letter?
Way to go, Dan.
I don't see it.
It's down there at the bottom.
I don't have it.
No, keeps calling.
Yeah, it's all done.
It should be down there. I've got it on mine. You know why? You probably have to open it up. It's closed right now for discussion items.
The motion was, we're doing it.
Didn't even know it.
Okay, it passes.
Yeah.
Yep, it passes.
And.
Okay, now we go to the department. Chief, anything to report?
Yes, I have a few things.
A few?
Yes, please bear with me.
Then you better get started.
Well, one of them better be the traffic on Main.
In, in the last two months, uh, Councilman Uker, we have issued eighty-five speeding citations on West Ripon.
Wow.
How many?
Eighty-five. And that's, that's about two-thirds.
I had two of those.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council members of the public, I just have two announcements and have just a quick, um, slide presentation, just kind of an end of year of twenty seventeen and an update. Uh, the first two, uh, items I have, uh, just a announcement for Thursday at seven AM. Uh, Ripon Police Department, along with members of City Hall and some of our allied law enforcement agencies, will be participating in the Special Olympics torch run. This will be our, uh, third year of doing it. Uh, we'll start at the Ripon Historical Arch, right there in front of the American Legion of Fire Station, uh, run northbound on South Stockton, and then, uh, we'll be heading out of town on Main Street to West Ripon.
That's this Thursday?
This Thursday, in two days. And we'll end up at, uh, the Dual Vocational Institute in Tracy. It's about a twenty-mile run.
Holy smokes.
So, uh, we have, uh, our, our team has grown, so we're, we're very excited to have as many people participate with us, so. Uh, so that, we'll be doing that Thursday, uh, morning. And then, um, because of the, the way that the, uh, Fourth of July is, is falling, uh, we usually do an open house that week. And I just wanted to make an announcement that on July second, from noon to five PM, we'll be having our annual open house. It's a Monday. And we try to do it on the Monday before the fourth. Um, so we'll be hosting that out in front of the Ripon, uh, the Police Department and then have tours of the station and so forth.
What were the times again?
Uh, noon to five. And then again, the slide presentation's just a, a few slides of kind of, uh, some trends that have gone on and some of the, uh, statistics that, uh, we encountered in twenty seventeen. And then I'll talk a little bit about twenty eighteen, but, uh, it just won't take very long to go through. Uh, it's kind of hard to see on the big screen. I apologize for that.
I'm just part of the statistic.
So what we're looking at here are types of incidents. We have two types of incidents within the Police Department, uh, self-initiated and, and, uh, dispatched calls for service. Uh, the green, uh, lime green is the calls for service. The blue is the officer-initiated activity. The far-right numbers are twenty seventeen. Uh, as you can see, uh, we had an increase in calls for service compared to twenty sixteen, and our officer-initiated activity, uh, went down slightly. Uh, usually as the calls for service go up, there's less free time, uh, officer-initiated activity go down. But also I want to just acknowledge that, starting in August of twenty seventeen, uh, we lost a few officers due to, um, uh, resignations. Either they transferred to other agencies or they retired. Uh, so for a significant portion of twenty seventeen, uh, since August, we were down anywhere from four to six officers at any given moment. So, um, although it's a little concerning, I, I like to see our officer-initiated activity up higher than that. Uh, I believe a huge portion of the decrease was due to the, uh, reduced number of officers we had, uh, on the street at that time. Here are our total incidents, uh, that we respond to. It's just a combination of both those numbers on the previous screen. As you can see, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, uh, pretty flat, uh, which was a huge decrease, uh, from twenty fifteen and fourteen. Uh, most of that was due to officer-initiated activity. Uh, and we did have a small reduction in calls for service. And you'll see why some of that occurred on some other slides here. Here are our UCR part one crimes. Uh, what we have here on the far left, where there's zero, that's our homicides, uh, that have occurred since, uh, twenty thirteen. Uh, the next, uh, item is our reported rapes. Uh, then we have robberies, which is in the next, uh, smaller, uh, cluster to the right. Then when we start getting our higher numbers, uh, the middle one is assaults. Those are aggravated and simple assaults. As you can see, the dark blue on the right, uh, we had a slight, uh, decrease from, uh, twenty sixteen, but we've had dramatic increases from twenty thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Uh, that middle one, that's kind of an anomaly in, uh, is our burglaries. Uh, we had a slight increase, uh, in burglaries last year. Uh, I believe we had a total of six more than we did in twenty sixteen. Uh, but those have kind of stayed flat over the past four years, which is great, which is a huge reduction from twenty thirteen, which is that far-left blue one that's a little bit of a spike above the rest. Uh, the large cluster is our larcenies. Those are thefts, grand thefts, petty thefts, shoplifting. Uh, as you can see with, uh, we're not getting any help from the legislator, uh, our state legislators that are passing, uh, laws that are basically making it more viable for criminals to get away with those types of crimes. Uh, so we are seeing an increase, uh, in, in those types of thefts from, uh, the previous two, two to three years. But it is still a reduction from twenty thirteen. So, uh, even though we don't like the trend, um, the number overall is not, is not horrible. Uh, the cluster, the smaller cluster to the right of that is motor vehicle theft. We had a slight decrease in motor vehicle theft. We usually average between nineteen and twenty vehicles stolen per year. Uh, most of those tend to be, uh, diesel trailers or diesel rigs out of the truck stops. We usually get probably, uh, in the average of six to nine actual motor vehicle thefts from our neighborhoods. Uh, but actually that decreased last year. And then the far, uh, column on the right, which is just a, a small blip, is our arson. Uh, we usually get, uh, one to zero of those per year in twenty thirteen and fourteen. And I think twenty thirteen, we actually had three, and twenty, uh, fourteen, we had two, and we haven't had one since.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Let's just take assaults or larceny as an example. I'm not saying one's better than the other, but like for assaults for an example. Do you have a breakdown between, let's say, family members that beat up each other or whatever versus just some innocent person on the street? And, and larceny, is it, you know, somebody stealing from their mom and dad that get reported? Or is it people stealing from somebody else? Do we have those kind of details?
We, we don't, but we get those, but, but we don't keep track of it. The, the, the program that we use doesn't differentiate that unless you go out and actively search for that information. Um, because I, I'm pretty familiar with what types of, of crimes that are associated with the thefts or assaults, um, I kind of have a general idea of what they are. And, and I could tell you the, the assaults tend to be domestic violence.
Okay.
Uh, a, a significant amount of those are domestic violence. Uh, sprinkled in with, uh, uh, a, a fight at a restaurant or a bar, and then some school altercations. That's basically the breakdown of our assaults. But a, a significant amount of those are domestic violence.
Okay, and I bring that up only from the standpoint that when you see that, it's like, gosh, is, is Ripon dangerous? And, and I'm not making light of, you know, domestic assaults, but it's not as bad as if somebody's walking down the street if it was all somebody unknown being attacked.
Right, and that's how we look at it. The, we've actually tried to take some proactive measures to reduce the assaults because, uh, when you, when you look at just the pure numbers, you, you do come up with those types of, uh, impressions that, uh, maybe it's unsafe. Um, so it is very difficult to prevent things that are occurring within the home though.
Right, sure.
Uh, unless you can do some outreach and public education and, uh, and that's what we try to do with, we try to do that at a lower level in the school, uh, age group. So as they become adults, we kind of veer them away from that type of behavior. But unfortunately, um, a lot of that becomes unpreventable at, at some point for, for law enforcement. It, it's upon each individual person to take that preventive measure, measure usually.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and again, uh, we had a, the larcenies, huge spike at the end of the year, probably, uh, starting at Thanksgiving last year, November through, actually, the beginning of twenty eighteen, where, uh, unlocked cars would be, uh, were being rummaged through, things were being taken from them. Um, that has since subsided. And, uh, as of this morning, we're actually nineteen percent, uh, reduced from our UCR part one crimes this year-to-date for this year, which is a, a, a great thing for us. Not only for the Police Department, but for the community. And that kind of goes in here. These are the total numbers, uh, of our UCR part one crimes, um, year-to-date. As you can see, in, uh, twenty thirteen, uh, it kind of reached its peak and it, it dropped and it's kind of leveled off since then. Uh, but, uh, the far number on the right, we're actually like, again, nineteen percent below year-to-date so far this year, which is a, a great accomplishment for the, for the guys and girls, uh, that are out, uh, patrolling our streets.
What happened between twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen?
AB one oh nine, Prop forty-seven, Prop fifty-seven. Uh, that's where we start seeing that, in twenty eleven, the increase was AB one oh nine. Uh, twenty thirteen, we start seeing Prop forty-seven, and then in twenty, uh, uh, end of twenty thirteen, begin twenty fourteen, Prop fifty-seven.
Yep.
But you can see that it starts climbing dramatically, uh, with, uh, twenty eleven with Prop, uh, I'm sorry, it's AB one oh nine.
Yep. Of course.
And also taking into account when all that's occurring, the recession's occurring, uh, we lost staff. We reduced staff, so there's less officers on the street, and just a perfect storm type, type of example.
Arm.
Uh, kind of show this, just as a, uh, as an indicator of arrests that we make. The top line, the blue line, is misdemeanor arrests. As you can see, uh, in twenty fifteen, those went up dramatically. Uh, the felony arrests, uh, since twenty thirteen has not, uh, really changed very much. Um, it's decreased slightly, but, uh, we have an influx in, uh, those misdemeanor arrests. Uh, a huge, uh, part of that was in twenty fifteen were the river levels, and we were having a lot of illegal activity occurring at the, at the river. And those are significantly, uh, those were raised significantly because of that behavior. Uh, actually in twenty fourteen, I'm sorry, twenty sixteen and seventeen, the river levels have been so high, uh, a lot of the crime has been, uh, removed from that area because people aren't going down there as frequently.
Chief, can I ask you a question? So let's say, let's take the nine fifty-eight in twenty seventeen. That's not necessarily nine hundred and fifty-eight different people. That could be, you know, forty people creating fifty misdemeanors, right?
That is correct. That, that could be multiple arrests by, by a few people within our community.
And that happens, correct?
That does happen. But the, the other thing to re, to remember is that about sixty-eight percent of the people we arrest, whether it's for felony or misdemeanor, do not reside in our community. So only about thirty-two percent of the people reflected in that graph reside within our community. Uh, this is just a, a graph of the citations that we've issued over the years. As you can see, in twenty seventeen, uh, the blue is the moving citations. Those are your speed, stop sign, unsafe turning, uh, things that are more likely to cause accidents or collisions. Um, the green are total citations issued. The total citations issued is a little, uh, oddly to explain because it, it also includes parking, but it also includes citations issued to individual people. So if you got a citation for having an open container, you'd be included in that green, the green graph. Um, but the blue graph is, uh, moving citations only. And as you can see, it's increased since twenty sixteen and pretty flat from twenty fifteen and, and before. Uh, I wanted to include this, just because, uh, there has been a lot of talk about, uh, the increased, uh, traffic in our community. These are total traffic collision incidents that we get per year. As you can see, in 2016, it increased significantly, and we have a slight reduction in 2017. The good news is, so far, year-to-date in 2018, we're minus twenty-six percent from 2017. So, we have it, it looks like it peaked in 2016, and we have that downing trend. So, we're happy to see that. Although those incidents would seem pretty high, especially in 2016, you have over two hundred incidents of traffic collisions. A lot of those on private property. Those are in the parking lots at the truck stops, where two diesel rigs are backing into each other, hitting trailers and so forth. So, a lot of those are information exchanges, but we do still respond to every traffic collision within our community. I always include this, just because people are always curious. This is our concealed weapons permits issued for 2017. The green is the totals permits issued. The blue are the renewed, and the yellow are new citations issued. There are still roughly about three hundred and forty concealed weapons permits within our community.
What's the numbers?
Three forty.
Total, it's about three forty. I don't have, I don't have the... That's the bad thing about creating graphs. You have to pick the right one to show the numbers. I didn't, I didn't include them in there, but I can get those to you later if you'd like.
No, that's fine.
But total, the total CCWs that we issued within the community is about three forty. New ones, if I remember correctly, is about forty-five. We issued about forty-five new ones in 2017. And there was roughly, I want to say ninety renewals? Somewhere around there. It keeps our community service officer pretty busy in managing that program for us. The other items, we talk about fleet vehicles quite a bit, so I just wanted to show a breakdown of the year of vehicles that we have within our patrol fleet. The only anomaly is 2015, where we actually bought an administrative vehicle, which was assigned to our lieutenant. In 2016, we actually bought it, 2016 and 17, but, so we actually had bought two in 2016, two in 2017. And we bought three in 2018, but one of those was a donated vehicle. So, we've been trying to maintain that level of two for some time to replace our fleet vehicles. We have roughly just a handful left of the Crown Vics that are, they're still surviving, but they're going to need to be replaced soon. City Administrator Warner has two new ones in the proposed budget, so we'll be rotating a couple of those out if that gets approved. But we are on a good trend of getting those rotated out and moving forward with our fleet maintenance. And then also, I just want to touch on department staffing, because I kind of mentioned it earlier in some of the slides. So, we're authorized for twenty-four. We currently have four spots on our patrol officer that are unfilled. We currently have five officers, or potential officers, in background. Unfortunately, one of them looks like he's going to take another job with a neighboring agency, just because they were able to move faster through the background process. So, it looks like they're going to be hired, but we still have four viable candidates for those four slots. Two of them are moving forward. We've already given, well, we have given two of them conditional job offers. One of them will have their psych and medical exam later this week, and one will probably be the following week. So, we could potentially have all four of those vacancies filled by July second, which would be fantastic. And we have also, we're authorized for nine non-sworn full-time. Six of those are dispatchers. We have one vacant dispatcher position. We'll get the results of that background tomorrow, and hopefully have them also on staff by the beginning or middle of July. And then we have five authorized non-sworn part-time, and all those spots are filled. So, it's been a long process, again, since last August that we started having vacancies, but we're hoping by the first part of July, we'll have all those filled. So, very excited about that. And that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions. If not, I can either get your information later or answer your questions tonight.
Can you email that to us?
Yes, I can.
I can look at it. I like those. Thanks. Any questions? Ted, water.
I want to report on our water conservation efforts. In May, we were, our reduction was down to twenty-six point eight percent from 2013, given our, excuse me, a twelve-month running average of twenty-three point six percent.
Are we getting very many reported violations?
In May, we had twelve, twelve reported. Some of those, four of them came from the public, the rest came from our staff.
Have we issued any citations?
We issued one citation in May. I think in the previous month, I think there was three issued. We're still issuing citations for the repeat offenders.
Okay, thank you.
People are still trying to figure out their sprinkler systems and everything, I think. I don't know, we don't...
There are some people in town who apparently don't know how to read a clock or a calendar.
We, we, it's getting better. We still, we still have a few that...
Imagine when I drive down California, there's a house on the corner of California, the water's always running.
I know.
Nine yards dead!
That's why the water runs off. Thanks, Ted. Kai, anything? Ken?
Yes, really quickly, we will be having a planning commission meeting on Monday night, so if you're bored, join us. We've got about four items on the agenda. Techra, who is over on Industrial Avenue. They will be, is a proposal to expand the warehouse site that they're in by roughly a third, about twelve thousand square feet addition over there. The corner of Acacia and Doak Boulevard is vacant lot down there by Power Play Arena. There's a proposal for a building on that site. And, let's see, Ripon Christian is looking to put up a electronic message board sign, much like Ripon High has, for their events and such at the school that they have. And the last item is a comprehensive update of our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or what we refer to as second dwelling unit ordinance. The state has passed some laws, really kind of tying our hands on what we can and can't do with those, so we had to go through our ordinance to make sure it was compliant with state law. So, there'll be a comprehensive update of that. So, if you are sitting at home and wondering what you want to do on Monday night, since there's no NBA finals anymore, come down and join us.
Thank you. James, anything?
Yeah, just real quick, I did want to mention Caltrans has officially closed down the on-ramp at Northbound 99.
Yes, they have.
At Second Street, so their original schedule is ninety days. We'll try to keep the public informed as much as possible as we hear from them moving forward with that. And then also, Fulton Avenue is closed down for the Vineyard subdivision. We're looking to have that opened the first week of July. And then also, it wasn't a staff report, but we are having a public meeting for the ADA Transition and Self-Evaluation Plan, June 27th at four PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Counsel.
That sign on the northbound on-ramp, it shows five months. It says from June first to November first.
I think that's their standard sign.
Yeah, I could talk to their project manager. What they had informed us is an ID process, but...
Yeah, but it's Caltrans.
Yeah, I'll check into it.
And they only work four days a week, so. Tom? Are you sure?
Yeah.
You wanted to pin Caltrans? No? Okay. Kevin?
Nothing to report.
Nothing? Daniel?
Yeah, last week, was it? Last week Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month? We had the Economic Development Committee meeting. A few things came out of it. We are working, moving forward with the marketing brochure, I guess, that's one step. A lot of discussion about formatting more of our goals for the committee and forming a subcommittee to prepare our mission statement, basically, and develop that a little bit further. And one of the topics that came out of that that we discussed briefly, I don't know if Leo, if you have any more information on the...
Food trucks.
Food truck stuff. We got some feedback from members of the public, interested in trying to look at our policy and see if there's interest in the council to make changes to that policy. We're going to employ the chamber to do some research and ask around businesses and things. I've talked to several people myself, and I've got varying answers from what the public has. And I think there's reasons why we established the policy previously, to why it is the way it is now. Something we can certainly discuss in the future, but it's not, I think we're waiting on feedback at this point from the chamber.
We have that.
We have their feedback, so.
Tamara's putting it together. It's, it's, it is a mixed bag, too, but... Apparently, the reason that the current policy is in place, which basically says none, is because of concern about brick and mortar. But the brick and mortar people aren't that concerned anymore, as long as some conditions... So, we're going to put something together and probably take it to Ken, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay.
Kevin, I've got a question. I didn't think we had a policy. I thought what you gave us was more of a parking kind of policy.
No, that's an ordinance.
Yeah, but it says that as long as you get the chief's approval, you can park anywhere on private property you own. And nothing stops...
I believe that's, though, if like a business, say, wants to have a venture, to say, well, I'm going to give tacos out today to my clients.
Well, what I read in there, if a taco truck decides to come in and wants to park in a parking lot, they go down and get a permit, and they can do it, the way I read.
Well, but then it's up to the chief to decide whether they get the permit.
Not going to give the permit.
The ordinance talks about the chief of police being able to issue a permit. The problem with that is, we don't have a permit process for that. So, we rely on the special event permit process. And so, if there was an event in town, and they were going to have food trucks, we asked them to include that in their special event permit, and then we approve it that way.
Okay. Well, I read what we got in the mail, and it didn't seem like it addressed.
At this point in time, that's the only option that we have to issue a permit.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, we discussed it. We're looking into it. We'll see where it leads to. And as always, thank you to the members of public that are here. Appreciate you being here and paying attention to what's going on. Thanks.
Jake?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Dean?
I would just would like to appreciate the school district showing up. When I ran for city council twelve years ago, it was one of my thoughts that the school district and the council, the fire department, which we, everybody thinks that we control all you people, but we don't. To work together is what we want to do, and which we should do, and I really appreciate you showing up. And sorry you had to sit through the, listen to all this stuff, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is this an election year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Luke Zuber?
First, I would like to acknowledge Andy, who is the, what are you, the executive director for San Joaquin Cog?
Yes.
Well, and if you want to be here for when your item's on the agenda, you need to get here on time, because we're almost done. Just thought I would bring that up.
Humpf.
Leo's stuck up for you. Don't worry about it.
I have two things. One, I don't know if the rest of the council got it, but the League of Cities, I think it's this region is looking, we pay dues, and they're looking at changing the way they charge the dues. And so, I think Dean is our rep, right?
I'm the assistant.
No, you're the guy. I'm the backup. But we need to get somebody at the next meeting, because depending on how this thing goes, our dues could show us a... Right now, what they do is assess the dues based on population. What they're thinking about doing is taking the total population, dividing it by the number of cities, and that's what you're going to pay. So, everybody will pay the same amount. So, if we don't like it, we need to make sure somebody's there to oppose it.
I did reach out to Stephen Qualls. I asked him for some backup information, just what the money was going to be used for, and what the budgets are. And I have not received that yet. I'll follow up with him again.
Well, he said there was a lot of things going through the legislator that they want to defend or not defend.
And then there may be five things on the ballot in November, too, that they're worried about. So, anyway, just...
I got that. I got to you there.
Gotcha. My other question is for the chief. Isn't there a rule about how much tinting you can have on the front windows of your car?
Yes, anything?
Do we do anything about it? Because I'm getting tired of the same thing. You drive up to an intersection, you can't even see in there to see if the person notices that you're there or not. There's a lot of them.
Yes, there is, and that's, that's the problem, is that it's almost insurmountable to try to enforce all the violations. And then you have to try to determine, who do you stop and how often do you stop them? The officers do have the capability, or the ability, to stop them, and we do have tint meters that the officers have to be able to check that. Anything forward to the driver is, unless it's factory, it's not allowed.
Okay. I'll leave it at that. It's just, I... It's a daily occurrence now, that if you come up to an intersection where there's multiples, you know, trying to decide who's going to do what. Two of the cars have the windows so tinted, you don't even know if the driver's looking your way or not, and that's not good. I drive a big truck, so I'm less worried than the guy that's in the little Mazda, but it's still disconcerting.
I always went by the theory that if I can't tell if you're a man or a woman driving, then your tint was probably too dark.
Well, that may be hard, anyway.
I'm just seeing as an objective...
Yes, Andy, we're not politically correct here. You came to Ripon.
And you came late, in case you forgot to be reminded.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, with that, anything else you want to surprise Andy with? Okay, meeting adjourned.